Madam Clerk, will you please call the row for our City Council meeting?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Present.
Councilor Easter.
Present.
Councilor Greenwood.
Present.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Present.
We have four present and one ask.
Item four, we have presentation of the minutes from the previous held meeting on Thursday, October 13, 2016. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for October 13, 2016. It's been moved by myself, seconded by Councilman Eastern. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Councilor Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. Item five, we have approval of a proposed agenda. I'd like to add an amendment to the agenda to add item six B, which is the resolution concurrent with the Illinois Department of Transportation's modifications to Missouri Avenue, add a portion of the Martin Luther King Bridge project. I am making the motion to add item six B.
Second.
Do we have any questions from council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Councilor Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. We have item six, reports of the Public Works Committee, Councilman Robert Eastern III.
Thank you, ma'am. Six A is the presentation of resolutions to approve the annual more few tax maintenance plan for fiscal year 2017. Six B is a resolution concurrent with the Illinois Department of Transportation, the I-DOT modifications to Missouri Avenue as a portion of the Martin Luther King Bridge project. I'd like to move to the approval of items, item six A and B.
Simple.
Other questions?
Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Councilor Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. We do have representatives from I-DOT here. They want to come forward at this time. We've just passed the legislation, but to talk to the citizen system a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Ann Taylor Crete and I am working with the Illinois Department of Transportation on the project associated with the replacement of the Martin Luther King Bridge structure. With me tonight is Geraldine Hazard and Erin Coburn, as well as Elvie Jowen from, Elvie Jowen was from the Illinois Department of Transportation, but Geraldine Hazard and Erin Coburn are both with Majeski Masters, who is the engineering consultant for this particular project. This evening, we wanted to come before you to ask the city requesting the city's concurrence regarding the performance of these roadway improvements associated with the replacement of the Martin Luther King Bridge structure. In particular, we are looking at some of the modifications that will have to happen to Missouri Avenue as it relates to the replacement of these two bridge structures. The construction project includes a new bridge and retaining walls, as well as miscellaneous roadway improvements associated with that. The construction of this project will require, as I indicated before, improvements to Missouri Avenue, which is currently within the right-of-way with the state of Illinois and currently maintained by the City of East St. Louis. We met previous, earlier in September, with the City Manager, City Manager Logan, where we began to kind of talk a little bit about this project and share with him. And he recommended that we come and share with the City Council, as well as with members of the community, about this particular project. With the concurrence, what's happening is that the city agrees to execute the necessary agreements relating to the ordinances pertaining to the work that's to be done, and also to continue to do maintenance of Missouri Avenue, which is currently maintained by the city, as well as the new storm sewers that will be included in the project with the whole reconstruction of that. One of the things that was also brought to our attention when we met with City Manager Logan had to do with many of the brick pavers of Missouri Avenue. It was brought to our attention that the city would like for us to salvage those and deliver them so that the city can use them in other areas of the city, and that is something that the department will be willing to do, and appearing to do as a part of this project. I'm going to ask Geraldine Hazard to provide you a little bit more details about the modifications that will need to happen as it relates to Missouri Avenue and the packet of materials that you have. You do have some maps that talks about the specific location where this project is located. I should provide you more of those details as it relates to what's going to happen specifically. Geraldine?
Thank you, and thanks for having us tonight. As she mentioned, we are replacing the Martin Luther King approach structure. So some of the main bridges, the approach structure, it's the middle of the three structures, not the eastbound or westbound route, but it's the one that carries one lane in each direction. It's the oldest structure. It was built at the same time they built the Martin Luther King Bridge. And just due to its condition and deterioration and the seismic detailing of it, it's been recommended to be replaced. It's currently 15 spans, so there's a lot of substructure units holding it up. We're going with a five-span replacement, so we're going to take the number of substructure units down, but that's generally because there's a lot of things going on under there that weren't going on under there before. So we have Illinois relocated about three that is now divided lanes that's under the structure. We also have the three railroad lines that are under there, Union Pacific Terminal Railroad and KCS. And then we have Missouri Avenue, and we have the new pump station that's being built at the corner of Missouri Avenue there with Second Street. So because of all those constraints, in order to jump over all of those things, as well as the existing foundations that are there, because we don't want to go back on top of those, we've set this plan arrangement to try to jump everything. Our first plan arrangement, we were landing right in the middle of Missouri Avenue and didn't want to do that and impact it in that fashion and have to go around. So we moved it as far as we could to get it off to the north side. In your packet, you'll see Missouri Avenue is currently 45 feet wide. It is a brick street. There is still brick there. You can see it underneath all the construction. There's a lot going on down there right now. There aren't any curb and gutters at this point. So what we would need to do to be able to put that here in is to realign Missouri Avenue just to the south side. So it's not changing the full alignment, but it's moving the traffic to the south side of the street. It would still be 22 feet in width, which is per the current guidelines. We would be putting down an asphalt street with curb and gutter and tying into the storm sewers that are being placed right now for the pump station project. So that would handle drainage. It would greatly improve the street as is, and it would allow us to also put the pier in within the structure. Those are some of the pros and cons of what's going on with Missouri Avenue itself. The bridge, the bridge itself that we're replacing, we are putting in wider shoulders, so there will be room for disabled vehicles if something happens. Right now, when you drive across the bridge with the truss span, there's not a lot of room up there. There's no lighting going in. And also on 5564, as you go underneath the bridge that we're replacing, the retaining wall is pretty close to the shoulder there, and there's not a lot of sight distance around that curve. So that's another thing that we're doing with the project, is pulling that sight distance issue back, moving the retaining wall as well. Any questions, any comment I glossed over that you'd like more information on?
No.
Any questions? Thank you, guys, for coming. Good luck with those elections, and thank you for explaining that to our citizens.
Thank you.
Do we have anything further from the Public Works Committee, Councilman?
No, ma'am, I have to start.
Item seven, reports of the Finance Committee, Councilwoman June Hallowell.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven A, presentation of an ordinance for the mayor and City Council to approve Amendment Number One to the 2016 budget. I'd like to move for approval of item seventeen.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman June Hallowell, seconded by Councilman Eastern. Do we have any questions regarding item seven A? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Councilor Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. Do we have anything further from the Finance Committee? That's a public safety. Anything further from the Finance Committee? Thank you, Councilwoman June Hamilton-Dane. We are now going to report to the Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Latoya Greenwood, but before we go there, I just want to publicly congratulate Councilwoman Greenwood, our state president.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We definitely look forward to working with you on the state level.
Thank you, and thank you to the citizens of East St. Louis. I could not have done it without you. Thank you. Item eight A, presentation of regulatory affairs business license. We have four, in and out anymore, located at 906 North 11th Street, L.A. Customs Auto Service, 1443 Bonner Avenue, Pops Holding Group, 2441 Bonner Avenue, Waggons, 517 Missouri Avenue. I'd like to make a motion to approve item eight A.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilman Eastern. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Councilor Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes.
Item eight B, presentation of an ordinance for the mayor and City Council to approve the purchase of labor and material for the installation of three-phase 480 slash 277 vote panel board with a 24-amp three-phase breaker, also the installation of a 30 kVA transformer to power existing 200-amp single-phase 42-space panel. I would like to make a motion to approve item eight B.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilman Eastern. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Council Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. Do we have anything further from the Public Safety Committee?
Non-sensational. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We're moving on to item nine, reports of the Community Development Committee, that is Councilman Rod Mosley, Sr. In his absence, I will conduct the Community Development Committee meeting. Item nine A is presentation of an ordinance for the mayor and City Council to convey parcel number 02-26.0-300-UO13 and parcel number 02-26.0-300-UO14 to the Capel Foundation for a Youth Mentoring Center. Is there a motion to approve item nine A?
So moved.
Is there, it's been moved by Councilman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Councilor Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. Item nine B is presentation of an ordinance of the City of East St. Louis authorizing and approving properties eligible for the year 2016 citywide rehab program. And this rehab will be 18 North 79th Street. Is there a motion to approve item nine B?
Second.
Moving?
Moving.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Dean and seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter, Councilor Easter, Councilor Easter, Councilor Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. Item nine C is presentation of an ordinance of the City of East St. Louis authorizing and approving properties eligible for the year 2016 50/50 citywide rehab program. We have three properties, 627 North 39th Street, 912 North 88th Street, and 20 Bowling Hill Drive. Is there a motion to approve item nine C for the 50/50 citywide?
Moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Dean, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Council Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. Item nine D, do you all have item nine D?
No.
I don't have it here. I know we discussed it last week. Attorney, what is the reality situation here?
The legislation was presented to this bill. I don't know why it didn't make the agenda. We did review it and everything was approved. It was an issue with the planning commission. I believe that they were simply moving to the number of absences that you could have because the, their schedule had changed from meeting twice a month to meeting once per month. So I had no issues with the change. I don't know why the legislation did not make it back. There was no issue with what they were proposing. So I think that the council, or the council did review the document.
Right.
It has not changed. We can get a document to you tomorrow if the compact was approved through committee. It has not been altered from that format. If the council wishes to approve the copy of the document that went through committee, we can. We'll be sure.
You're asking me to put, you are asking me to sign a document that no one has seen that's just blank, so I don't sign it.
All right, so we need to, we have to have the document here.
I don't have a copy. Yeah, I don't know why it wasn't in the packet. I don't have a copy of it to get it to yourself.
Okay, so at this point, because we need an original document, we're going to have to forego passing it. I guess we'll pass it at the next meeting. Item 10, any old business? Councilwoman has a proposal if you want to pray.
That's fine. If somebody wants to pray a copy, you can, you can.
Just use the pen, because I can't draw that document that we're going to use as a new thing.
Okay, so we'll just come back to it when we get a copy. Okay, so we're going to move on to, thanks, Councilwoman. We're going to move on to new business, Greenleaf Tire Recycling Center came before us last week, and we have a recommendation from the City of East St. Louis Planning Commission, and I'm going to read it. On October 26, 2016, the East St. Louis Planning Commission reviewed a presentation by Greenleaf Recycling Center, represented by E.G. Thomas Tamas and Richard Tree Lord. The developer's plan is to build and operate a tire recycling facility at 105 South 17th Street. The developer has site control and financing in place. The developer indicated they would not seek tax abatement and any business development incentives that may be applicable at this time. They plan to be operational by spring of 2017. Employment would be approximately 17 for this phase of operation. The developer stressed the desire to hire as many local residents as possible. Training will be provided by the developer. The site is currently zoned correctly, emblazoned, which is manufacturing and industrial. A motion was made by Colonel Davis, Secretary of Independence O'Savage, to recommend to the City Council to assist in approving the project as presented. All commissioners voted to approve this motion. Motion was carried. Please accept our recommendation to approve this project and assist with the development as it will. This is not something that we really need to vote on, but I wanted to, it came before committee last week, and I wanted to make sure the council was okay with the project before I just sent out a letter supporting it. Everybody's okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no further discussion needed. I just wanted to make sure we were okay with it. Okay. Item 12, that's
Mayor, if you, I have one item that the City Manager wished for me to pass out to the council.
Okay.
This is, the city's finance software condemnation is five versions out of date. It is no longer being supported. This is an item that had been budgeted for at the beginning of the year, and the upgrade needs to occur. Mr. Stewart can speak to the details on the issue, but the City Manager in his absence asked that we do this to you guys for consideration.
Okay, is there a motion to add this item as, under new business, as item 11 B?
Yes, I'll make the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Council Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. At this time, we're going to ask Mr. Stewart to come forward.
He's ready.
To give us a brief overview.
Just as Attorney Wagner stated, this is the city's information software, so it's the city's accounting software. We're five versions past what we should be. The, currently, if there was any errors or any data that would be lost, or any problems that would occur in the system, there's no guarantee that our accounting software support team would be able to recover that information for. So we're in a position of vulnerability. So the total cost of getting everything upgraded, getting this product to the most recent version, as well as any hardware upgrades as far as for servers, would be approximately $50,000. So it's probably $2,000 for the software itself, an additional $15,000 for the two servers that's needed. One server for the actual accounting software, and then another software for the actual corporate that we use. Again, this was something that the budget director budgeted for since the beginning of the year. He's been, well, aware of the issue for over a year. We talked with the, our accounting software provider. So this was something that was known. We knew that they were stopped supporting us at some particular point in time. We just ended up at one point in time, they were not being able to support us. So we wanted to definitely get this out, get this taken care of before something actually did happen.
Do we have any questions from council? Is there a motion to approve item 11 B?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Mosley, Councilor Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilor Easter.
Yes.
Council Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four I's and what else?
Motion passes. Item 12, City Manager, he's not here. Item 13, do we have any comments from City Council?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for all the condolences and for all the, the help and all the prayers and the support. And my time, reading the times, losing my wife, so special thanks to the East St. Louis Police Department for all the hard work, and I appreciate that. And to all the councilperson who, they came by, talked all stuff to Council Greenwood, and, you know, Mayor, phone calls, Councilwoman Dean, I appreciate that. I just want to say thank you. My family thanks you as well.
Absolutely. Do you have any? I have one announcement. It was in the paper, but we do have, the City of East St. Louis Deputy Liquor Commissioner will be having a public hearing on Thursday, November 17, 2016, at 5:30 PM. The location of the public hearing will be City of East St. Louis, Illinois City Hall, 301 River Park Drive, East St. Louis, Illinois, second floor, council chamber is right here. The purpose of the public hearing is to discuss liquor and liquor licensing. The public is invited to attend, and it is November 17, 2017, at 5:30 PM, right here. At this time, we're going to move to citizens' comments. In behalf of the top of the list, Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Good evening.
And citizens, I just have a few things. Congratulations to you, Ms. Greenwood, for being our state rep.
Thank you.
So I hope that you do great things while holding that office.
Thank you.
Really, really, I would like to know from the Finance Committee, what about, has the budget been passed? What about 2017? 2017 is coming up. What are we doing about that and the budget? And for the public safety part of it, I, we've had, I know, I think I've lost count, it was about 20 murders thus far, maybe 21. What are we doing about the public safety aspect of the city coming up next year? And, and then the trash service. I still see people on my block without, they don't put their trash out, so trash service is still an issue. Where are we on making sure that everybody in the city has trash service to eliminate some of the trash that's being thrown throughout the city? Although the city is much cleaner, you know, I drive down St. Clair Avenue and stuff, so the city is looking much, much cleaner, and whoever is doing that job is doing a terrific job trying to keep it up. But the three things on my agenda is the trash service, the budget, and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joshua. Ms. Clerk, do you want to come and address the budget?
The only thing that I can say is that the City Manager expects to have a budget on file, and I think tomorrow, tomorrow's holiday, so I think it'll be on, on file on Monday, 2017 budget, so. Twenty-seventeen budget, so four months.
And also, and relates to that budget, we will make sure that we discuss, you know, the finances. We will be having special time town halls to discuss the financial, but the budget.
The twenty-sixteen ever passed?
Yes, 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 public safety.
Well, we have been in discussions. I met with the mayor, it was Friday.
Yes.
And we discussed some issues and concerns that we had in the public safety area. That she can give us an update on the actual number of murders. Which I think, Ms. Joshua, you may be right, it's like twenty-one?
We're twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Last year, we were at nineteen. We hit an all-time low. I guess we hadn't been at nineteen, I guess, maybe about six years ago. This year, we're at twenty-two, so we're right around the average, I hate to say average for that number, but we are. But I talked to an individual yesterday that ran some, well, two days ago, that ran some stats for us. And I do want the citizens to know, even with that homicide number there, crime in East St. Louis has dropped ten percent, and that's tremendous. In the last year, violent crimes, our crimes down ten percent. There are some other things that we're doing as well as far as enforcement. Traffic enforcement is up, so be mindful if you see more cars, more officers out there stopping cars in the city. Traffic enforcement is up. They're doing some more proactive patrols, doing some more business checks. Like I said, that homicide number is there, so we're working to get that down. But be assured that crime is down ten percent.
And doing the job of actual solving the, those murders. Because that's the issue too, the many cold cases are unstopped. So he's been doing a great job. The chief has been doing a great job in trying to solve those as well. And the partnerships that we have with other municipalities, the state police, the St. Clair County.
And also to add that with the partnerships, once again, some of y'all know, we talk about it. Slight unit, the street level investigation, the criminal enforcement unit. We've taken it to another level. We've got tremendous assistance from the United States Attorney's Office. So actually, when that unit goes out, we have a Assistant State U.S. Attorney that's on call that if we get, if we get anything, whether it's gun offenses, drug offenses, that meet the criteria, all we do is call them. And they're right there with us. They're all actually giving us training. We've had two trainings from the U.S. Attorney's Office. The next training we'll be doing for officers in that unit is courtroom testimony. So they're assisting us tremendously with the U.S., United States Marshal Service assisting our officers and the Illinois State Police. I just left a meeting with St. Louis City, a comp stat meeting with their command staff this morning. And officers, we have tasers, but we haven't given them to some of our officers because of training. So the, so they have a training unit that's gonna give our officers that training so we can get those tasers on the street. Less than lethal, lethal use initiatives for officers, and they're gonna do that training for us for free. So we are getting some cooperation from a lot of agencies and U.S. Attorney. That was one main thing, because they actually came to us and talked with myself and some other chiefs and said to us, if there's anything that they can do to assist us. So the cooperation is coming in from other agencies as well.
And one of the things that the mayor is really pushing is about grants. So hopefully, we can secure some grants to increase the police department. And we're trying to bring back, I think we have one or two police officers that still laid off. So that we'll have a full force.
And then there's the issue of the trash service. So that issue was brought by Ms. Joshua and also Councilwoman Mosley. So at the onset of that, the city manager has begun to do some things to see who is not, who does not have trash service. So we are in the process of working on that. We're in the process of working on it. It's a huge undertaking. So we are working on that. We are addressing that. Before we go any further, I just wanna take the time out to honor one of our younger interns by the name of Mr. Deshaun. He is twelve years old. I would like Deshaun to stand. He's been interning. I just wanted to acknowledge him and say that we appreciate him. And I know the police officers are enjoying him as he is interning. Chief, anybody, Deshaun, you want to have, do you have any words?
Uh, Deshaun, I just wanna tell y'all about him. He's been the guy I seen. He walked into our office one day and literally walked in my office and said, well, chief, hey, you know, I wanna be a police officer. Can you help me out? You know, I wanna ride with you guys. I wanna be around you guys. And got to talking to him more. He's persistent. He actually had Madison Police Fire Department come pick him and his family up in a fire truck at his house. He's a resident of Granny City. They come pick him up to work, take him to work dispatch and bring him home. But he's with us for the long haul. And I guess in about a month or so, you'll see him with a uniform on. We're gonna get him in the MECOP program, but he's a good kid. You talk to him of where there's information, so we're just glad to have him with us.
It's good to get good reports like that, right? Also very good when we have the opportunity to mentor and encourage our young people in the areas of interest that they have as far as their career is concerned. That's great. We have next, Mr. Nate Jeffries. Ms. Terry Barnes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here about safety and living my street. I know, I don't know if you all wrote down Bellmont lately, but they look nice. I have some pictures that this degree I've been asking, they had worked on it. I've been asking them to move there for over two months. Then I also talked to Ms. Clem and Mr. Lorenzo to ask them to come down to inspect it. Because I don't think they did it. They could've did it better. Because it's still flooded on the street, you know. I asked the man, was he gonna level it off? He said, yes. He did bring one load of rocks down, but it's not level. It's still flooded on the street. And it sit down there. And I asked, you know, before they came, you know, just don't let them get away with that. Because, you know, they come down here, you know, the contractor, and just, just get away with saying it in East St. Louis. You know, I looked everywhere else when I ride to other cities, it, it definitely looks not like that. So I appreciate that they can, the contractor did the work to come out there and get the degree off, across the street from our lot. And also, the other picture is that, I don't never go down the back way. But I went down the back way and then I seen, if you see it right there with New Belmont. You couldn't, when you come off of King's Highway to Bellmont with New Belmont, you can't see because of trees. So I did see something, one of the public workers asked them, can they go cut it? So you see what they did? The stop sign was up, so when they cut it, the stop sign ain't down. They left it like that. But it, it looks a mess over there. And then it's so much trash over there from fifty-two to fifty-eighth street on Bellmont. And I see people working on their houses, and I know they, public workers have cleaned it up so many times. But it's like people work on their houses and buy these houses. And then they just come, you know, throw everything out there, yeah. And then I'm concerned about my crime, so my street is so dark over there. The only light that we have is the light, you know, around our property and stuff like that. But I called Amherst and, and they said that we would have to pay, we said like two thousand dollars for a pole or a sign. I said, no, we can't afford that. But like I said, we doing our best to keep that street up, you know. We paid to keep it up. Like I say, and then the precinct committee, I don't know if you all have a meeting with the precinct committee, but I think they can do a lot of work. I know you all can't get out there, but it's sad. The precinct committee, they really have to do their job. Yeah, I wish they could do more, but like I say, they can get out there and get that debris out there on the street. It's some flood on the street again because of water that's hit there. And then put the drains down there. So I think if they would've leveled the street up, the water would've went straight down to the drains that they put up on the street.
Is the precinct committee not in, not in contact with the citizens?
No. I seen my, actually, I seen him last week and I said, I'm gonna get to meet, talk to him. She was through last week. But anyway, I seen him today and I talked to him. I said, you know, I just, you know, do better. And I said, you need to get out of this little, just when it's time to vote, we would like to see you floor. Because, you know, I can only do so much, you know, like fifty-third is right, but it's, you know, it's not as bad as it used to be. It's better. But still, you know, I just think they can get out of that, what you do all and get you all know what's going on and all. Not only is my precinct, but all of the precincts.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Ms. Clemmons. The debris and leveling off of the street. Can you?
Uh, we will look at that. I will, on Monday, go out and take a look at that. If you said the contractor left some debris, they will, you know, they will definitely have to remove that. So we will look at, which is how I'm gonna level it off the street.
I mean, I, I, Mayor, I really hope so. Because like I say, I've been complaining. I'm calling Mr. Lorenzo. And now Phil is asking to come out and walk the street here. It's not returning on call. I talked to Ms. Clemmons. But ain't no way they should've got paid because, you know, they could've been paid at least for a five hundred dollars more to put rocks on the street to build it up before they took the asphalt down. Like I say, it's gonna flood again after because of the water still sit right there in that area.
Well, we will definitely have someone come out and look at it. Okay, and these are the pictures. Chairman?
Mayor, after the committee meeting the other night, I gave the information on TPI, the sewer bills. And I want you guys to know that, one, Mr. Bennett, we got access to sewer bills. And I need, you met with the city manager and called on yesterday. Here's your copy of it. One point two million unpaid bills that are ninety days or more. And so we gotta get with Attorney Wagner so that we can update what we had from two thousand twelve. You guys approved TPI. If you notice, Councilwoman, it says that there was pre- template letter to warn the legal people. And I got a copy of that. And anybody over ninety days, once council approves it, we can start a collection on it. The second thing I wanted to mention to you is that the tax levy is due, like first Tuesday in December. So you're gonna have to have a special meeting on public hearing to get the tax levy filed on time. So just wanted to make a note of the tax levies due and we have the city manager. We're gonna give you one tax levy and we're gonna give you another tax levy, one dependent once. And you guys will make the decision, but it will be ready. How long does, how long do we have to do a public hearing on it?
They have not, they have not added task to the public hearing. It hasn't.
I know, but how soon can we do one?
We can do one. I'll have to give you ten days of the paper. And after that, we can have a public hearing, but we got to get it in paper. We haven't set a date or a time yet.
So we have a couple of things to do. Attorney Wagner called and I met with the city manager yesterday because we need to go after this money to the city of East St. Louis. And if you look at some of those names on it, there's a lot of names. So we need to, this is a lot of things. And the city manager said, this is the list from the housing authority that they owe. And he's gonna talk to them about it before they get turned over. But what, what the, once the council approves it, we'll be putting links on front of people's houses and not paying the bill. So what you have there is a copy of anybody's that hasn't paid in over ninety days.
So just to clarify, this is one point two unpaid sewer bills by citizens.
This is something I've been asking for since last year.
But I just wanna make it clear for the citizens, this is one, this is not, this is for citizens. These are the length of bills for the citizens and businesses.
And businesses.
Inside, inside churches.
Yeah. Governmental agencies, these are people who did not pay the bills. And I just asked her to form up everything that's sixty-one days overpass due. This was done back in September.
I do have a question about that.
Okay.
Because I bought a piece of property that had an outstanding deal for seventeen hundred dollars. I end up paying it, but shouldn't that bill have been collected by the previous owner?
Yeah, but, but, and I would say this, and this is very important, we kind of follow up on this. For example, if you own a piece of property and you don't tenant in there, they don't pay, American bonds will send the owner the bill. And that's what needs to happen with this. Is that so that the owners of the property know that their tenants haven't paid the bill. So we have a lot of work to do in a short period of time, but it's something that we need to do to get, to get it started. It's a lot of work, but.
Mayor, we need to set that date as soon as possible because we just trying to stay in state statute group. So long as we put it out there and you can have, you still can work on the budget, but if you have to.
Budget and the, budget and the levy are two.
But the levy has to be filed. It's gonna be first Tuesday. So that's something that needs to be done as soon as we get it done.
Okay, so we are, as soon as we got it done, we'll go ahead and call the new.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
Sounds good.
And I wanna thank the treasurer for bringing that and reminding me because, so that I can remind the citizens now that if you haven't paid a sewer bill and a corporate citizen as well, now would be a good time to do it. Because we aren't gonna be collecting. Okay, thank you, treasurer. Ms. Richard Trillo.
I'm here. I've been filling a site over here between the MetroLink and Seventh Street. And we've had a lot of clean fill, and over the past year or so, we've had a lot of illegal dumping. And it, it, I guess it goes to this other lady's comment earlier, but it doesn't seem as though the regulatory affairs have any real teeth to do anything about it. Now, I've been liaising with Jason. He's mentioned, there's been a lot of calls about the dirt over there. And I've said to him over the period, a lot of the dirt's not my, it's not my rock and concrete and et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just wondering if there's any way that we can give the regulatory affairs people some teeth? Because I spoke to Courtney the other day about it, and he said, well, send me the pictures and speak reported to the police. But, you know, it can cost tens of thousands of dollars to remove this stuff. And it's happened two or three times. We've put up cameras, we've got pictures of perpetrators, but it's as though nothing can really be done. And the essence is on me to fix and remove. But of course, we have to truck the stuff out, get equipment, they're heavy equipment. And we've had probably a thousand tons of concrete and rock and all bigger stuff that should be there for the clean fill. So I'm just wondering if there's anything that we done about it, you know, any real? Because suing doesn't, you know, that can be, end up being years. And of course, we're, we're expected to remove this stuff sort of near immediately, you know.
So, Mr. Trillo, you did file a police report?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Jason's aware of it, but we've gone backwards and forth. He's been pleasant about it all. It's just that, you know.
So you say give it some teeth. I'm not sure what.
Well, the regulatory affairs, yeah, maybe confiscate their trucks or something. I mean, we'll, we'll at least find somebody and do some, you know, get at these people who are just continuously doing this stuff.
Chief, have you coordinated with the police chief on this issue?
Not yet. I have talked, I told Chief Wagner I had to speak to him about something, but I haven't got around to it. Well, when I spoke to Mr. Trillo, I did direct him to the police department to cut the, become illegal dumping evidence. Criminal matter at this point. We don't have arresting power in regulatory affairs to go out and arrest anyone for that. So I said, the pictures that he has, any information, he can turn over to the police department. I did make some calls to several companies, and they pointed the fingers at each other to say, he was that guy, he was that guy, he was that guy. So I'm still following up with that. But I have brought that information, I've talked to Mr. Trillo about this situation.
Okay, so it sounds like there needs to be some enforcement on the police side. Have you provided them with the video?
Yeah, I've talked to them about it. I've gotten, I've talked to Courtney about it as well. But I also talked to Alicia yesterday, and she said, well, there's no real way, you don't have court or something here at the moment. And there's not much you can do about it.
She said what?
She said that you don't have any real fining ability or any real legal recourse other than suing is what I think my interpretation of what she said to me was.
The regulatory affairs court is not set up, but as I stated before, that becomes a criminal matter. That's illegal dumping, and once that's returned over, if I went out there today, I still could arrest him without the assistance of the police department. So that's where we have, the start has to go, we start here. And we'll move forward to get to the investigation of these guys.
I guess I wasn't clear. So you've really got some teeth and you can really move forward with some of this stuff?
The police department has the teeth.
Okay. Okay.
I got them, they got them.
Okay, so, so chief, will you, uh, make sure that, uh, this is coordinated with the police department? So that we can go, because we, we've been looking at those piles of dirt and concrete and all of that, and it's been illegally dumped, and we wanna make sure that the people who have been dumping it are prosecuted to the fullest extent, because we're tired of that. That's not just, that's not the only area. And folks have got to know that they just cannot come in our city and do whatever they want to do. We're not happy with that. So, please make sure, uh, that's taken care of. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let the citizens know that, um, a lot of the, I've been getting a lot of calls, by the way, I'm the city manager's assistant, and I've gotten a lot of calls about this dumping. And a lot of people are saying that it is, um, uh, citizens, you know. We get a lot of complaints saying that people are coming from St. Louis, and that's not the case. People are telling us that they are citizens. And I asked the citizens to do this, spread the word, and ask that, you know, I feel like some of these people, you know these people, or you've seen them around, and, you know, it's like, well, that's how I'm dropping. And then we come here and say, "Well, regulatory affairs needs to do this, this and that." If you guys have a problem, we can help you guys. So, that's all I, I just asked that, thanks.
At this time, um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn...